Would you please stand for a moment of prayer? Dear Lord, thank you for the beautiful day you've given us and thank you for this opportunity to come and conduct the business of the City of Ransville. Lord, we pray for wisdom and knowledge and we pray you'll guide us as we make decisions that would affect not only us but the other people in our city. Father, we're thankful for all the good things you bestow on us. We're thankful for our employees. We're thankful for each individual and we just pray that you would be with those in foreign countries that have been hurt through this terrorist attack. Father, would you watch over and care for their families and bring healing and peace to them, these mean things by asking your name?
Thomas and the pledge, taken salute, pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's five o'clock and we've got a public hearing for the rezoning of some property located on 1557 Marshall Road. I'm sure the zoning committee has looked at this and went over it. Does someone have a paper from the zoning?
I, I know they did. I hope the committee will.
Okay, I should have the report.
Yeah, they met on 10/20/2015, 5:30 at the Tom Bellson Center. Five members were present. The matter discussed was rezoning a small area from R1 to B1 for operation of a barber shop on Marshall Road. Their recommendation was to rezonate and that carried five votes to zero.
Do I have a motion to accept the?
I'll make a motion to accept their recommendation.
I will second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, sir. So that piece of property will be rezoned. All right? Yes, sir.
Start getting there.
All right, the next thing, next person on the agenda is Mr. Dr. Jason Marnett. Come on in, speak.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council this evening. I am Jason Marnett and I'm running for Kappa Kine Superintendent Education. I've been trying to get out and introduce myself to as many folks as possible and go around to different councils and just kind of talk and introduce myself. And since we introduced this campaign or kicked it off on July the 13th, well over four months ago, we've been going all over the place, north, south, east, west of the county. And I had a lot of questions, which has created a lot of excitement for us. And as we're doing this, one of the common questions that have been asked of me is, you know, why don't you run for superintendent? There's a short answer and a long answer. I'm gonna try to give someone a lot shorter. But the general idea is I think we can do, you know, better. I think we can do it better. I've got two children that are students and that one of them's a student currently in the Kappa Kine School System and one will start in school in the near future. So for about the next fifteen to sixteen years, at a minimum, I'm gonna have children in this school system. And so I want, you know, the Kappa Kine to be as good as it is, as good as it can be. And I want my children to have every opportunity that anybody would have anywhere, no matter where they live or where they reside. There's kind of five points of the platform that I'm running on and I would encourage you to check out my website. It's drjasonmarnett.com or on Facebook, you can find me there. My cellphone also is (256) 717-3558 if anybody has any additional questions. There's kind of five points that I'm running forward on and the first one is communication. That's a major important, without communication, you really don't have a whole lot of leadership. Communication is a very important part and I think that's one reason why I'm here tonight. I want to communicate with the cities, municipalities, and as many folks as I can about my ideas and my vision. And it's a two-way street, not only talking and selling the vision, selling the ideas that I have, but also hearing the concerns and the needs of the communities in which the school system represents. The second point is being a voice for our schools. And by voice, sometimes voice and communication can be intertwined, but I guess by voice, in this case, I most mean advocate. The Kappa Kine Schools is in a unique situation, whereas we have nine legislators that serve a portion of our district or our county. Of course, in the House of Representatives, Representative Ledbetter, of course, has most of it. We also have Representative Haynes, Representative Ainsworth, Representative Kerry Ridge, Becky Norman, Richard Lindsay, that's their six of them. And in the Senate, of course, Steve Livingston has most of it, but then we also have Clay Schofield and Phil Williamson. So we've got a lot of representation. I was in Montgomery, I actually ran to Teresa while I was in Montgomery, sat there when they were announcing a superintendent and other school districts there. So I'm introducing myself to them and talking with them and just kind of asking, you know, what was going on, you know, getting some ideas and some figures from them. And he told me that, you know, he was there because he had been a voice for his school system, to his delegation that represented him, and he wanted to show up and support them since they were supporting him and kind of follow up on that. And not only with those folks, but in our local community, being a voice, advocating for our students, advocating for what's best the technology needs for our students, instructional needs, the support of our community college, our local business, our local industry tech schools, arts academies, that sort of stuff, being a voice for them. The third point is instructional leadership. That's really where it all goes, happens in the classroom. What happens in the classroom is ultimately all these other things. We've got educators and stuff in the room and you know, all these things are good, but really what happens in the classroom is where the success is going to be made. And I've come to the realization that, you know, we're only gonna be as good as our employees and stuff. So it's important that we support them. If we've got the teachers that we have, we need to encourage them, support them, develop them to be the very best they can. When we handle these, we need to make sure that we hire the very best principals, teachers, custodians, CFP workers, whatever it may be. My background is a, as a teacher, I talked for several years and I went to instructional coach position. My doctor's in instructional leadership and I teach instructional leadership for Jacksonville State University in their graduate department. So I feel that that's something that I can bring to the table, is being visible in those classrooms, going around encouraging teachers about the good things I see and also providing feedback and support and opportunities to develop their craft and increase their abilities when needed and appropriate. Innovation of technology and resources, the fourth point of my platform, I'd issue to say. And in Limestone County and several other counties, recently I'm seeing them in the news for getting grants and initiatives and things off the ground where they're providing devices for every student in the classroom. And I'm not necessarily certain that a one-on-one initiative is exactly what the Kappa Kine needs. I'm not saying it is, I'm not saying it's not yet. But what I am saying is we've got to provide opportunities and access to our students to have these devices. We don't necessarily, my idea is more of a blended model, whereas the instruction and the education and the teaching has always been successful for our students. We need to continue with that. We need to, we need to, the building of relationships and having those relationships with our students, making them feel important, make them feel special. And the way we've engaged and the way we've built upon their prior learning, all those things that have been successful, we need to keep it, the best practices we need to maintain. But when you use and integrate technology and that sort of stuff, you're able to go from simply consuming knowledge to being able to allow your children and students to produce knowledge and share it, not only with their classmates, but their peers in other schools across the state and as far as, as far as they want to. And the fifth point is simply, you know, vision for our schools. Like I mentioned earlier, my children are going to be products of this school district just like I was. I think that there's a lot of things we can do, there's a lot of challenges that the Kappa Kine has. But with great challenges comes great opportunities and I've spoken with many folks and I think that, you know, there's a lot of things that we can do. When I look at this, I was telling some folks the other day, you know, I, when I, this group I was speaking to, I was talking about different districts and things they had done and my idea is I want somebody somewhere one day to say, why can't we be like the Kappa Kine? Why can't we have, you know, the integration of technology that they do? Why can't we have, you know, these programs, these academies, these resources? And it takes a lot of people working together, but, you know, I think we can do some of those things. I'm very excited about this opportunity, this possibility. As we went out, we had great feedback, which has created some excitement for us. So I'm gonna, I'd like to give you a card with my phone number and everything and of course, most of you already had it, but I'd like to give it to you guys and if you ever need anything or if I can ever help in any way, please don't hesitate to give me a call.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will, will get started and go down the legs.
I got a few things on here. First thing I want to talk about was the, the general obligation bond that we've done earlier this year for the repayment of the loan on this facility for $3,000 and to help with the bridge projects or take care of the bridge projects and other municipal upgrades. It has come to my knowledge that some of that money has been appropriated for different things. And of course, later on, what I'm gonna ask is that each one of those items be voted on and reimbursed from the credit fund. But an overall picture, I think we need to appoint at least two members of the council and in all honesty, I think it should come with two, two members that don't have signature power to bring up all items to be paid for out of this bond and bring it to this table and be voted on and passed to a public meeting. Therefore, everybody knows exactly what that bond money was spent on and how it's being Now, it's not a, I would, I said it here as a bond appropriation committee, it's not really a committee. It would just, we would ask two council members to be in charge of bringing each item to the table to be voted on before it's, the money is spent. Now, I don't have any suggestions as who the two members should be. So I would, I would leave that open tonight, or actually I'd like for us to discuss that and see what the thoughts of the council is as, as who would be the appropriate people to, to bring that to the table. Is there any, anyone having thoughts on that matter?
I mean, you could do that or you could, because we have a list of items that the bond money covered, so we could list that in a document and accept that document that has to be brought to the table. Did I say that properly? Do you get what I'm saying? The list of items that the bond money covers and regardless of anything over $750 is spent out of any account, it has to come to the table anyway. I don't care to be on the committee and I don't care which way, I'm just gonna think of maybe the easiest route.
Yeah, because we had them broken down, what we had done, the reason, what we got, what we did was, we each went over through our departments on the bus to what we had to have. But I, I said, I don't care to be on the committee.
Well, I'll be is, hey, if something, if we're gonna spend some money, that that person, all they did is they, they'll just be putting underneath their agenda and bring it up to the meeting.
That's fine, I don't care.
Yeah, I'll do it.
All right. Now, does that, we need to vote on that come the meeting?
I mean, I, I think it's just us having the responsibility of putting it on our agenda.
Okay.
I would think, I mean, we don't have any more power than what we did before and we can't, we're still bringing money to the table to vote on. Yeah.
Okay, our reject project at the sewer, at the wastewater treatment plant is, we're in the process of applying for a law and grant. And that, that money has not come in yet, however, the project has started. And there was an initial payment that was, maybe it was somewhere $240,000. And the, the bond money was used to, to float that payment, pay that payment when it was due. And as soon as we get the grant and loan combination, I will be asking us to reimburse the bonded, the bond issue, that money. And I will make that in the form of a motion tonight, so it will be on the official record. And there was one other item that that bond money was used for, and that was the resurfacing of Mitchell Avenue and Tiger Lane. I spoke with our accountant today, Miss Betty Holcomb, and she had suggested that, that one, that we need to reimburse the bond fund for that. And her recommendation was to use $70,000 out of the two gas funds. We have a seven cent gas fund and four five cent gas fund. So she said that 70,000 out of it and then 57,000 out of the general fund portion of the street department. So that's another one that I would ask to be voted on tonight. Now, we had mentioned that this was used for capital improvements and capital improvements is assistance for the Weekly Post renovations or the Weekly Post building renovations. Since we do not have the two members on the committee, I, I would ask that one of y'all tonight bring up the renovations to be paid for out of, for the Weekly Post building, out of the general obligation bond fund. Or, I can do it, it don't matter, but it's on the agenda, so somebody needs to bring that up and we'll have that already designated how we're gonna pay for it. I will be looking into a new software ability system for the sewer and sanitation to help Miss Sheila out in, in City Hall. Mr. Dobbins has went through and created a sheet where we can kind of see the number of customers and cans and collection and the money associated with that. One of the things that we're gonna be looking at is, is the possible expansion of somewhere else to create more revenue. We have nothing in concrete right now, but before we expand this, we thought it would be wise to have some efficiency built into the building system. So that is one of the things that we'll be working with. And the last thing is we have this ordinance right here to amend, an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number eight dash 1583. This was the recommendation of the zoning board that we had the public hearing for. I'll be asking us to suspend the routes for immediate consideration on this ordinance and to pass and adopt it if the routes are suspended. That is all that I have for this meeting.
I just have some concerns about some break-ins and I don't need to put Officer Devlin on the spot, but can you tell me, are we having two officers at night or three?
We have two officers at night right now. When Penninger comes back from the academy, he will probably ride about two weeks on day shift to get familiarized with the roads again, make sure that he is understanding, you know, what Ransville expects out of him to do. And he will go to night shift as a third man. I've talked with the mayor a little bit about getting another third man on nights, so that way we have three per shift on night. That way we can split two of them up into zones and then you have your supervisor as a rover, which means he will travel all over and he can back up the other guy. So if you can, if you put three on nights, you like split the city in north and south and you get more coverage area. With only having two on a shift, you never know, both of them are rovers and you never know where they're gonna be. They may be on the same side of the city at the same time and not realize it. So if we can get three on night shift with a supervisor, I think when you get more coverage, better coverage and maybe try to help cut down some of these break-ins. Like I said, me and the mayor have talked about it. There was not a yes and there wasn't a no. He said, you know, we'd have to bring it up, talk before the council and all that. But I, I think that would be best for the city if we could get three men per night shift. And you go from there. I, I would like to do it, you know, as soon as possible because the holiday seasons are coming up and that's when more break-ins occur. You know, it is what it is on that, you know, criminals don't rest and it seems like they get more desperate during the holiday season.
Well, I, I just was speaking on a personal matter and the mayor called me this afternoon and asked me about it. We have currently 10 officers, is that correct?
Oh, we have nine that are in the department right now and one in the academy, if I'm not mistaken.
And do you foresee us looking at hiring another one or have you guys talked about that?
I would like to try to, but like I said, you know, we got, he has to bring it up before the council before we can.
Right, I know that he and I spoke about that for a little bit and I don't think he was really opposed to that. We were talking about the one that is in the academy and I know that'll alleviate some of the problems when he comes back.
Right.
But of course, we have one that's overseas at the moment that is causing a little bit of a hardship as far as covering everything.
Which me and Steve have got that worked out. We're working together on covering my shifts and he's working with me. That way I can do the administrative job and my job as well.
Right.
So, I mean, we're, we're getting that worked out and I talked to the, I talked to Nick about maybe getting a few part-time people to help alleviate with some overtime on that part. So we've talked about maybe a couple of part-time guys and getting one more guy for night shift. That way we can run three on nights on each shift and then if we need some help throughout the week or something like that, then we can get a few part-time guys to step up and come in and kind of alleviate some overtime on that.
I don't think you'd have any opposition to hiring some either full-time employees or part-time police officers. I just know that from a personal standpoint, one particular break-in, they were in the house for a couple of days and no one knew it.
Right.
And, you know, that's close to the middle of Ransville and I know other people have dealt with that and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I think it's a very important need that we have for our city, their safety. And I think if we could add a couple of part-time and especially have three on the night shift, I think we would all sleep a little safer now.
I agree. Like I said, when, when I first was given the opportunity to do the job that I've been appointed to do right now, that was one of the first things that me and the mayor addressed. We talked about, you know, some ways where we could help better the city. I gave them an outline of what I would like to see, but me and him both kind of agreed to whoever the next chief, whenever Charles decides to retire, you know, it would be on their benefit to look at that. But we did talk about maybe getting a third, you know, three per night shift, so that was something that he, he kind of liked too as well.
How many do we have in the day typically, three or four?
We have, during the day shift, we've got two officers that actually work the road and then we have Steve and then depending on whether or not the chief and the assistant chief is here, we'll have them also out and they typically work Monday through Friday. But right now, we have two on one shift and then me and Steve helping out on the other shift. Now, I will work Monday through Friday as well, but some days I'll work a 12 to 12 shift and Steve, the other day I'll work a 12 to 12 shift and then me and him have been splitting up my weekends. So that way we're keeping at least two officers on the road, Monday through Friday, we might have three at the time. I will, I run, you know, even when I'm doing my administrative stuff, I'm still helping answer calls and working the road as well.
So basically, you're telling me you got two officers in the day and two at night?
Correct, yes, sir.
I, I'm just gonna ask that you, in the meantime, talk before the next council meeting and see if you can come up with a plan to keep at least three officers on at night. I mean, I really don't think you're gonna face any opposition from us.
Right.
And I think, like I said, if it's about the safety of the citizens and, you know, anything can happen at any point in time.
Oh, yes.
But if we've got enough officers who are patrolling, that is a deterrent to the criminal opportunity.
It is. And like I said, we've talked about stuff like that and also, you know, even if we have someone call out city, at least you've got two there. So, I mean, it's the best for, for the city and the department and everybody involved in it.
I'm not gonna bring that up for a vote, but I'm just gonna ask you if you and the mayor could possibly get together before our first meeting in December, maybe have a game plan to either hire another officer. When is this cadet supposed to be back from the academy?
He graduates December the 17th, so he's only got a few more.
So by the first of the year, he should be acclimated to a night shift if that's where you're gonna put him.
Right. And that, that's where he'll end up going. Me and the mayor have talked, I've, I'm looking at putting him on Charles Coffin's shift because there's, both of them are seasoned officers, they've got a lot of knowledge so they can help train better than the, my experience that's on the other shift.
I wonder if when our assistant chief gets back, and this is just food for thought, that maybe the assistant chief would be a nighttime supervisor. So you've got a daytime supervisor, which is a chief, and a nighttime supervisor, which is the assistant chief. And then you would have to adjust the weekends, maybe have the, the assistant chief work Tuesday till, what, Saturday or Sunday? You know more about the schedule than I do, but if we could get three officers on the road, even if we had a, an admin person such as the assistant chief, that, that's four, which is even more security for the evenings, people are typically in the bed asleep.
Right.
Just a suggestion, just asking if you guys would look into it and discuss it. That's all I have.
Okay, AMRB has notified me that they voted and approved to take on the tornado memorial committee's account. They will do all the bookkeeping, they will technically be the 501(c)(3), this is what should have happened our first year of administration. But it's a good thing that they've approved it. They're the same ones that do the imagination library for me and so I will be bringing up to vote to close our account, put the monies that they had raised with AMRB. AMRB is the ones that check it, do the audits, everything. I'll also be bringing up the one-time pay raise. Do we date the pay checks on the Wednesday or the Friday? On the Wednesday. You dated on the Friday, so it will be the 20th. Is that correct? The Friday, the 20th?
Today is the 20th.
The 20th is Friday. Okay, that's what I'm on. So I'll be bringing that up to be on the 20th check because that is before my Friday, is what I was told.
You talking about for November?
Yes.
Okay.
The one, yes. And then I will be scheduling the Christmas breakfast, which the employee supply gets to be December 18th, so I'm gonna be bringing that up. And then also to purchase two printers for the annex and the total amount for that will be $1,076.54. That's all I have.
We have had an estimate where we've worked on this in the past and we've talked of dating everything for the new parking lot that we had to have built, bought builds for the lighting of it and we've got your estimates and everything that can be taken out of capital improvement and I'm going to ask that we pass that tonight so we can get the license done. And then the other thing I have is what we talked about initially when we was talking about our bond money, how we was gonna spend it and what we was gonna do, is we have several estimates and I'm not gonna vote on this tonight, but I want everybody to look over it, so the next council meeting that we can say, this is what we wanna do or we're gonna do something different about the expenses of redoing. We've got one corner of our pool that's collapsed.
It's gotta be fixed.
It's gotta be fixed, but the opportunity that we've got right now with that money, we can have like a small splash pad and stuff built that's right there here and we've got the estimates for all that to be there, completely remodel the pool house because I'm not, I was born in 77 and the pool was done there. So, I mean, I don't know exactly what year it was done, but I know several people with lifeguards in 76, so it was, it's deep, I'm sure, for a facelift.
I specifically say 71, 21.
Because if you go in there, the doors are rusted off and everything, it's, it's just hot. So that's what I want everybody.
I'm sure it's the same stalls for the basements and the same building.
Yeah, it's, it's nice.
But it needs to be remodeled.
It is terrible. But I just wanted everybody to look over the estimates and see if they're good with that. Then maybe, like I said, the next council meeting, let's vote, yeah, so that's what we wanna do or no, we wanna do something different. One other thing that's not on here that we did do, where we had our tennis courts and stuff done, the bleachers or benches, I'm not gonna say bleachers, was all the pieces. And I'm not gonna tell however they was too, but we replaced them and they were somewhere around the $2,000 range, so I need to, 21, 21, so we can do the backside.
Well, we be, leaving the, you know, we had a wall built, they were practicing tennis.
That wall is not there anymore.
Yes, and it's gonna stay gone?
Yeah. We're actually, as kind of a wedding wrecks when we had the court stuff redone. Yeah. We're actually, as kind of at wedding wrecks when we had the court stuff redone, we had a basketball court put on it, I assume, so we will, back when it gets to the way that where people's gonna use it, we'll save their money for a little bit, and then by the time you go, put it down there, so there'll be actually four goals to take a shot.
It also, I suppose, for a part of that, if we want out on there sometime, I have to bring that up.
Well, I must say both the basketball courts and tennis courts look very nice.
If anybody hasn't seen them, you're right, and look, it's.
Looks really good.
Looks really good. And that's all I have.
So I'm ready.
That's all.
Oh yeah.
We've made it through to me, uh, of course it's five thirty-nine, five thirty-one.
The meeting come to order, Craig?
Crescent.
Hall, Pierre, Ledbetter?
Here.
Lingerfeld?
Here.
Freeman. Here.
I, I'll start off by making a motion that we accept in the minutes that's presented and dispense with the reading there of.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Is this the minutes here in the second panel? So we haven't corrected it.
No, this is the minute.
Okay. I do, I have to make an exception here, the minutes that are presented, um, have an announcement and have discussion in it, which uh, typically minutes don't, don't have that. Minutes have who's here, um, and basically action is taken in the meeting. So which paragraph are you wanting to just look at? Uh, the second, the uh, paragraph under item two and the paragraph under that paragraph. Essentially, they're real short minutes, uh, because we're talking about the minutes, item one, item two, and a bunch of bills.
I was advised for the um, the contract, so I would prefer that was left in since I was advised, I'm attorney, to add that in.
Typically, announcements and discussion are not in the minutes.
Right, but we did the same thing when Southern Torch got that government document, and they didn't do a public records request, and I had to address it there, and we made note of it. It's the same thing here. We're just making note of it, so there's a record of it.
Everybody good with that? We've got a motion, a second to dispense with the reading and put the minutes that's presented. Say aye.
Aye.
I vote no, motion carries. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to you, Dr. Uh, I wasn't here for the workshop, and I'm not familiar with most of the items.
I guess Joey.
Okay.
I will uh, make a motion that we suspend the rules of, for, the rules for immediate consideration of ordinance number eleven dash sixteen dash twenty fifteen.
Okay. We have a motion to suspend the rules. Have a roll. You second it? Okay. Have a roll call vote, Freeman?
Yes.
Ledbetter?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Red?
Yes.
How about that, I mean, on the grounds of what ordinance is this?
It was the rezoning.
It's the public hearing that we had.
It was for Patty's Barbershop, where it's taking, the zoning code.
From all want to be.
Mm-hmm.
It was sent out through email.
It's on the, uh, located on one five five seven Marshall Road, of our huge, you and Patty's Parsons. They went before the zoning board and got the rezon, that's the, that's the ordinance coming from the uh, zoning, the rezoning.
So you had a public hearing?
Yeah, we had, it's at five o'clock, it was scheduled at five o'clock.
Um, if you have a negative, I will uh, stand my vote, but okay.
Okay. It passes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we gotta approve the resolution, since we've suspended the rules, or you, is that separate?
I make a motion that we pass and adopt ordinance eleven dash sixteen dash twenty fifteen.
I second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Obviously, you got orders. Vote, all vote?
Yes.
Turn them.
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, it passes. Okay, what else you have?
Okay, uh, I make a motion that, and let me see, how shall I word this? That the sewer fund reimburse twenty fifteen bond issue when the loan and grants money for lives of the two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. We have one, no vote. It passes.
Uh, I make a motion that we reimburse the twenty fifteen bond fund for the paving of Mitchell and Tiger, Mitchell Avenue and Tiger Lane, seventy thousand dollars out of the gas tax fund and the other fifty-seven out of the general fund under the street department bill.
Have a motion?
I, um, I second, I'm sorry.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to say something. Fifty-seven, fifty-seven thousand out of the general fund in November, if you remember, in November of the year. October, November, and December bear bonds as far as the general fund, because the bulk of revenue comes in January home. You know, I don't have a, I know the general fund balance, you know, has a ten-third one under roughly ninety-five thousand dollars, probably less than that now. Are we cognizant of that and what the balance is in the account?
Yes, I've spoke to Betty about this, since she had asked for discretion on the time limit of reimbursing out of the general fund, and she said that it would probably be at the end of the year or the first of the year before she would transfer that payment. We just wanted to make an official record of it, so that it does happen.
Okay. There's no timeframe on, okay. Just don't, don't we get it, it's not enough cash from you, or?
No.
Because it is the end of the year.
Yep. So that would be done when it's okay with Betty and the, if the fund looks okay to transfer.
Yes, I told Betty.
It's not like, don't happen tomorrow or something like that, so that will be, all right. So. Motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Aye, second.
Okay, um, well, I will bring up some of the topics underneath Mr. Lingerfeld, since he is conducting the meeting. The AgriCenter.
Hey, George, paying for, before you do that, since this other that you wanted to do, present your name, you need to bring that up tonight. If anything in the future, Temple, Mayor Melissa, they'll be glad to, but just, I think you need to do that tonight.
All right. Um, this is just a sheer formality, uh, since that bond was issued for capital improvements, uh, and the Weekly Post Building renovations being a capital improvement, I move that the Weekly Post Building renovations be paid for out of the twenty fifteen general obligation bond right now.
I second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, second.
Mr. Lingerfeld, myself, had the privilege of attending the AgriCenter board meeting last Wednesday, and in speaking with them, uh, they had a few suggestions. Uh, they had asked to have the public building authority board expanded to a five-member board and little of a three-member board. We have yet to designate any members for the expansion, uh, and are still in the process of looking at the legality of that expansion, and making sure that it's something that can be done fairly simple, and it's not too, too complicated of a maneuver. This was brought before the uh, uh, Mr. Thomas, the chairman of that board, did bring it to vote from the AgriCenter board, and it did pass with all in favor of it, uh, so it was unanimous vote. Uh, there's not really anything to vote on tonight. Uh, I, I wouldn't think so. Uh, we will be looking into the possibilities of, of, of new board members, or two new board members on that board, and the exact process, uh, due to that was, uh, some of that, that board was established, um, I think in a document with the USDA Association, and we just have to look into that and see exactly how that board is to be expanded.
What, what is, what's the reason?
Well, uh, I was there, uh, the uh, the uh, AgriCenter board was just wanting it to expand it to five people. They voted as a board to expand it to five people. Uh, what me and Joey had talked about is, is to make sure that it is, is it, that it can be expanded under the, under the laws that it was drawn up. Don't know for sure that it can be expanded, uh, but they just requested that. They, they made a mo, they made a motion in their meeting to expand that to a five-man board.
So, it probably can't.
It, it just needs to be looked at before we make it, you know, into a five-man board.
It's an incorporated board, and we'd like to do a residence of our own, but, um, why? I mean, what's the reason for expanding? It's got an advisory, or it's got an AgriCenter board that's eight or nine candidates on. I'm just curious.
They didn't really elaborate on it, they just said that that's what they wanted. They had probably done, they wanted to do that, so. That was their recommendation.
The invoices and, how shall I phrase this? Okay, the bill paying and the invoicing, um, we would like to move that from the responsibility of the director at the AgriCenter uh, to, to the city itself. And help alleviate some of the pressure on. Mr. Swett, he does a wonderful job. That way I can focus a little more of his time on booking events and keeping this place being as positive influence to the general fund as it has been. So I'll make a motion that we transfer the invoicing and bill paying of the AgriCenter's accounts to the city.
Have a motion.
Second.
Can I ask you a question? How does that work to it now? Does he do all of that?
He does, he does a lot of that now. Some of it is already done, bookkeeping is done through the city, so.
So really, two people are doing it. So this makes it easier for one person to keep up with it, ma'am, just?
Yes, I think so.
It's gonna increase Betty's bill problem.
But you, are you the one that gives out the POs and stuff? You heard the checks to be written, or how does that, how does all that work?
Now, I think all that comes from P on, they exchange it.
She's already doing part of it now?
She is.
When I talked to Betty about this, she said that this would be something that Kelly would probably be doing too. It wouldn't just be her, it would be part of, we'd be back on Kelly a little bit, so. And that's what Betty said, so, and you might, you might want it back on you.
Then other than, all, all of that will be done out of City Hall rather than City Hall in here?
Yes.
Okay, I see.
I want to grab a motion to move the, the bill paying and invoicing back to the city, with bookkeeping and all that put together. Have a motion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we need to renew the note on the Weekly Post Building, um, pay the twenty thousand dollars, which includes both principal and interest to be paid from the state capital improvement fund. Uh, make that in the form of a motion.
Have a motion.
I second that.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, second.
Okay, and, um, I have a, a shallow estate road update. Mr. Mayor, approach him. Could I have a little help with that one?
Um, to make it official, Sam sent a, an aerial photo of that road, and then a plot of the exact road of how it is. Now, we didn't have this, you know, in the meeting and all that, but he has sent that, so that makes it official, we can put it with, uh, where we, you know, took that road into the city. So that was just the, the documents that we need to go along with that. Uh, a little bit of update on it, um, the cost for the county to do, uh, grind the road, uh, go in there and, and crank it up with dense but, dense but grade gravel, and it'll just be gravel, uh, till we can pay it. But for them to do that, it's gonna be somewhere between five and seven thousand dollars. That's what they told me, so.
Do you need a motion to add that to our document, or how does that need to work?
Um, I don't think we have to have a motion, it's just, it's just a map that goes along, and, and it's, it's something that, uh, that we can just keep on file, so. But that's just kind of an update of the road.
Well, I need to, I need to make a motion that we, um, authorize up to seven thousand dollars payable to the county for the uh, repair and renovations to shallow estate road.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, second. Okay, all right.
I think I'm done.
There's problems?
I don't have anything to vote on, but uh, I will say, if the mayor wasn't here and he called me today about my concerns, I have asked Officer Devlin to get with you, and I talked about if there's any way we can get three officers on a shift at night, whether that's part-time or official employees, whatever that case may be. But, you know, you and I talked about it briefly, and then I talked about it with you. The other thing I was sitting here thinking about, at what point do we come up with an elections committee, or do you come up with that, and how far out do we need to do that? I know we have an election coming up in August, and just it, we're probably not being prepared for that.
I think probably, um, this is my opinion, probably, you're talking about election workers?
Yes.
Um, and guys will need to, form election workers. Um, there's, I'm not sure about the manager, election manager. I know typically the workers always done it, just don't know the popularity of that. It might need to be something formal, you know, maybe. The managers appointed and then the workers appointed.
I just, I just need that it's coming up, and we need to make sure our timeframes are, because I have people asking me, when do you qualify, and I don't, I have an idea when I think it is, but don't know if that's official.
I'm not sure. You like?
Yes. I believe half the day.
So our calendar is set, we just gotta have workers in a, probably administrative?
Uh, manager.
Manager.
Management, because it's probably just one of the managers. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, um, I will make a motion to uh, pay out the tornado memorial account to AMRB, the five oh one three C that is with the tornado memorial.
pay out the tornado memorial account to AMRB, the five oh one three C that is with the tornado memorial board.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a second.
Is this gonna be an addition to the current tornado memorial account?
No, this is the money that they raised. AMRB is gonna be doing the bookkeeping for them.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I second.
Okay, um, I make a motion that the one-time pay raise for our city employees, uh, is to be November twentieth paycheck.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, the one-time pay raise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I second.
Can I just make an announcement for the Christmas breakfast?
Yes.
Okay. So we can just include that and have it on Facebook, that December eighteenth will be our employee breakfast.
Is it still at Broadway or somewhere else?
No, no, we haven't, the city hall is. What is that?
Tom Devlin said?
That's what we had last year.
Information, so we'll see.
Should we put a little note in the check or something, maybe the week before or something like that? Just have a little reminder.
And, oh, I have one more. Um, I make a motion to allow the annex to spend one thousand seventy six dollars and fifty four cents for, um, printers for them to use.
Okay.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second to buy printers from annex. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I second.
One thing I wanna vote on, Devlin, I'll talk to him, I think, is this next council. Do you have one? With, one of the things I wanted to address and like I said, I'm not gonna bring up tonight, is the swimming pool renovation. We've got several estimates on that on which way we wanna go. And by the next council meeting, I might first make a decision of what, you know, how we all like to go about it, so.
What I have behind is the fill-in dreams for the parking lot for the new addition that we built, of having the lights and everything done. Total price is nine thousand seven hundred thirty seven dollars and sixty four cents to have it lit up. And that can be taken out of capital approval funds, not branded.
I have a motion and a second, uh, before we take the vote. Is that gonna light up the, uh, playground better too?
Probably.
Well, it's on the, on the existing ground parking lot. We're gonna have one post there with the bullhorns, so one lot will be for that parking lot, which is already geared by the other parking lot. One lot will be there and one will be towards the playground.
Okay.
Then the other two posts will be in the new playground down the other there.
I just knew that it was, it was dark and if we needed to add another post, you know, to light that playground a bit better, then it might be a good thing to go ahead and add one on the far end somewhere to light it backwards, you know, back that direction. It just looks dark out there, you know, and.
I can get this one, add one more on the other end of it. This one is on this end now.
If he don't think it's gonna be lit up good enough, I think we, this is my opinion, cause I'm up there a lot, you know? I think it would be good if we added that extra light just to make it safer and.
Man, that's the man who look at, he seems to think this will be sufficient.
Okay, all right.
Of course, when we're up there at night, if the lights are on, you don't need these lights anyway.
No.
It's gonna be something, there would be no problem, go back and ask him.
It should be, uh, easier to have once we do this.
Okay. All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I second.
That's all I have.
You wanna hear a few little benches?
Oh yeah, I guess I do give it up to you. For the tennis court, we had to replace the benches and stuff that was up there. We went with four benches after we had everything redone. And it's the same ones that we used for the high school field, it was up there for all four of them, it was twenty one hundred dollars. Need to make that into a motion, second.
Have a motion and a second, paper with benches. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I second.
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, who wants? Need to use up something, you wanna brand it?
I, I do, no, I do have a few questions. What is the plan for the pool?
That, we, you know, we got one side of the pool in this cabin.
Yeah.
And when we discussed with the bond money before, and that was a complete redo of the pool, pool house, everything, this was built by nineteen seventy one. We need to remount everything. And one of the estimates is showing too that we could add like a small splash pad and everything to that effect. Just kinda getting everybody's thoughts and make sure we're.
Is this number here, is that in the ballpark of that? I know, I know there's multiple.
Which one do you connect?
Well, no, the one right there, that's the lighting, I think.
The back of the addition of the.
That one right there is the bathroom. Splash pad.
No, not splash pad. We're like, I'll take the kiddie pool light, I like that in the park, splash pad.
They were able to keep a little bit of reservoir for the splash pad.
Cause the kiddie pool's been a problem ever since, I know for a fact that we've been in office because every year there's something wrong with it.
It was an issue before.
That is where it goes. Mayor from like, what is it, nine cops or one or two, whatever that is.
Yeah.
That's when they get in there doing that plumbing, they don't know what they'll have to do yet, so that's why there's a, a, that's in there. That's replacing all the filters.
So the hundred and one fifteen is the pool and the back house and.
Hmm, just the pool thirty.
Oh, just the pool, okay. And then the thirty four is the splash pad.
No, there's like, uh, you know, the back fair up on the front page there, that one's a plaque of it, and so that's the splash pad at the top of that. And then the other one is the pool house.
Pool house was thirty something?
Thirty four.
Thirty four.
Let me ask you a question. One of the years I was managing the pool, one of the people who came didn't think we needed three sand filters for the big one. Is that, you might change that, or are they just replacing what was already there?
They're talking about replacing what's there.
Because seems like we had a leak and one pool guy, who knows more than I did, didn't think we needed three. So I'm just, I don't know.
I don't know either. I just got them to look at it and tell me what they thought, and I said, you know, these shivers, all three of them are leaking.
Yes.
And they decided, I, I faxed them a fiberglass.
So he said, no, actually we faxed them a fiberglass and everything else to keep it sprayed.
So I, I got them to look at all that, look at the size of the pool, what they think about the pool. And I, I told them about plumbing, the leaks. We use eight hundred forty one thousand gallons of water this year. It only takes a hundred twenty five thousand to fill that pool. Going around that in three months.
So that's how much is leaking. Yeah, it's leaking. And if you ever go, like if you come to Farmer's Market or anything else, you'll see water running across the parking lot.
That's the only.
I mean, it's just kind of, feel like since in seventy one.
The other thing.
So most people just probably, you know, a little bit, they were a glamer in seventy one, so.
Thanks. At the end of that spillway down there at the, uh, Bell Center, it really, has it ever been tied into the city sewer there? Or is it still run out across the parking lot?
The Bell Center, um.
You know, if you go by the tennis courts.
It runs under the road. You're talking about when it, when you entered the pool down the side of the road?
No, when you, there's a, a reservoir where you, I'll talk to you about it.
Why don't I, I'll do that.
If, if a splash pad is added, um, what are, what are our thoughts on, would that attract more people to the pool? Would that?
The kiddie pool's always been an issue. It's hard to keep it clean and, you know, it, I mean, when people step into it, they, their feet sometimes slide out. There's no rail to get down in it, there's no step, it's just, you're in it or you're out.
It's a liability.
It is a liability. And if we could do away with that and add a splash pad, uh, I think you'd have more people who would come and use it.
Well, is that something which it would be better for us to go for an A M grant in this circumstance? Because that's what's gonna be there for a long, long time. That's what our issue was with it before. And there are, I think, fifty fifty?
Might be something with it. Wouldn't our pool against it?
We're spending money anyway, we're having to. And then that way we can go to the splash pad. That could be out, right in.
Was that the grant that tied all the property together?
It was, it's fill the dreams, but now here it's gonna be a completely different location, so.
Our issue with the track was it tied the entire property and inside. The splash pad was just you mark, you do the markers and that particular property would have to be for that. Since the pool's gonna stay there and it's gonna be more long-term, then it might be good for us to check into getting the grant for that property.
Well, if the next pool lasts as long as what this one is, I mean, it's.
It's been a good investment.
It's been a good one.
It's brought a lot of people together.
I think it'd be worth looking into.
It'd also make, I think it would make the, the pool location more attractive to after hour parties. When the older kids could play in the pool and the younger kids would have the splash pad.
We need to discuss the price of parties at some point, too.
Yeah. There hasn't been chances.
Not except.
Since then, we played little like, I said, I mean.
People come, people come from full time here to have the parties and I ask them why, and they said, cause it charges three hundred dollars down there, you charge eighty five.
Well, when I started, it was sixty, we went up to seventy five, so.
Their facilities are a lot bigger right now than what we've got up here too.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, um, most of the time the splash pads that are in parks, there's no admission. I mean, you know, the kids just, it's a free thing. But it's a pool, they have to pay. I mean, I know that would be more revenue.
Well, it'd be probably to the discretion, now if you're carrying up there a little bit of kids, you're, they're not getting, I think you'd have the same aspect to it, that you're talking about the kids, it's gonna be in the splash pad area, I think that that would probably be something that.
But I mean, you know they're gonna wanna get in the pool too, so.
I'm just, lots of times though, that that don't happen, you know, mom or daddy's gonna sit back there and let their kid in the splash pad, but they're not gonna get in some pool. So it's.
Well, I'm just saying, if it's an admission thing, they're gonna take them to Gerald, and then, I don't mind splash pad. I mean, I'm just saying.
They may do it, I don't know.
I mean, it, it might be a, a nice thing to have, but it would be nice if we had one that was, you know, where they could use it for free. Like at the fill the dreams.
We talked about that too.
I've worked many hours on that one.
Do you value?
Maybe we pay, pay the monthly bills.
Have a motion to pay the monthly bills?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I second.
Have a motion and a journey.
I second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.